And check.
Hey, Bill.
Yep, I'm here.
All right.
All right, everybody.
Nine fourteen.
The meeting is now in session at nine fourteen. All right, members present, all three selectmen are present. Hear from the public. Paul, you didn't have anything this morning, I'm assuming?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, for selectmen's briefing, okay, this will be brief. I've only been here for two and a half workdays. Now, yeah, two, two and a half, yes. Um, okay, the KMH, I'm sorry, the Knowlton, the cleaning contract has been signed. And they've already started their cleaning. I'm pretty thrilled that they're also going to be cleaning the hall, the large hall. Um, the, uh, the Ashford School generator supposedly has been shipped. But Bill, I wanted to ask you, had they told us that before? The company that's supposed to be accountable? You're, I can't hear you because you're on mute. Someone told, someone told me in passing that we've gotten that status for a while, that the, uh, Ashford School generator was shipped?
No, well, they had, we, we were of the understanding it was going to be delivered on the fifteenth of November. And then they clarified that and said, no, that's the ship date from, from the plant. And they told us we should anticipate receiving it sometime towards the end of this month, which we're there. But, uh, so it, they, they have always said the fifteenth. I think there was some misunderstanding whether we were going to receive it or it was actually going to be shipped, but we confirmed it was shipped on the fifteenth.
All right, so, uh, so we, it's been reconfirmed, I guess.
Right, we got something in writing from them to that effect.
Okay, thank you. And so I got something again from that as well. Okay, we have a continued problem with the furnace, annual service. We asked them to come out and do their annual service work. And they're supposed to be coming today to do that.
Is that the furnace there at, at Town Office Building?
Yes, Town Office Building, sorry. Why is there a problem with another furnace?
Well, we, we've got some ongoing issues with Knowlton Hall, um, and trying to figure out what we're going to do with those gaskets, but that's nothing major. Our, our problem at, at, at the Town Office Building started when their serviceman came out. We called him for Knowlton Hall and couldn't figure out why they weren't showing up, but their truck was there and we found them at the Town Office Building. And he admitted he went to the wrong building, but he had shut our, our boiler off at the office building. Um, that's when our trouble started about a week and a half ago with that.
Did he say, did he say why he shut it off?
He just said it was an error.
Okay.
Casey is on top of that though supposedly, because I asked him to get clarification, because we had two or three failures then right after that.
Okay, um, we received, all right, so we'll work with that. The, um, the ARPA business grants. We've received another one, and so we have a few of them sitting here, and I'd like to know where they're supposed to go. Do I give them to Margie Economic Development? Or, and we have.
We, we advertised that they, the closing date was December eighth.
Yeah.
And I asked Chris to start a file and keep it there. And I did talk to Margie because the plan is, I would assume after the eighth, and we'd give them the file and ask for them to make recommendations back to us.
Okay, so we're hanging on to them until December eighth?
That was my understanding. That's when the, that's when the closing was published for.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know that we were hanging on to them. Okay, uh, we're also looking at bids for furnace repair based upon whatever the problem is here at, here at this building. As, why, you're saying?
I thought the, the.
Oh, that, that's because of the gaskets. That's why it's the other building.
Yep.
Knowlton. So bear with me as I stumble through these because I've been.
Just to go back on that, um, I had talked to Nutmeg because originally we were of the impression Joe was going to have an arrangement with them to repair those gaskets. And I believe it was Steve there told me that they, it was too big a job for them, but they were going to send us uh, two or three names of furnace companies that did that. I don't know if that came in or not.
Thank you. I'll check that out.
I think it's going to be a springtime thing though, because they said they were going to have to actually break the boiler apart. And it was going to be down for two or three weeks. So I don't think it makes sense to tackle that going into winter.
No, it doesn't. Thank you. All right, um, another thing is that, um, our senior center director is back. And, uh, I have, uh, the person who was subbing for her is helping for, at least, uh, did yesterday and today, went through the reorganization of some of the materials, information, files, whatever, in, um, the senior center that she had cleaned up. So, uh, one of the things I'll be asking, and I think I need to put it on the agenda, is to move forward with having that individual who is very organized, uh, help organize the Public Works Director's files, et cetera, which he was keen on doing. He wanted that help. So I'll add that, um, as an agenda item or weekend as we get further on down. And then, uh, a couple of things. I need the password to the phone. I need the phone charger. And I, the password I used for Train, uh, was too long, the one that you had written up. So, um, I'm going to need a little help with that because I can't get into Train.
Okay, go, go back on the thing, the, the one on Train, probably best is to call them. But I have a card there in, in your card index that had that, the new code that they gave us.
Oh, okay, you had written one up and sent.
And then, and then I thought I had sent that, an email to you just to give you that code, but.
Yeah, that's what I used.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't let me type in, it was too long. It wouldn't let me type in all of the characters.
Interesting.
Okay, so I need to call them to get an.
I'd call Train. Is it Tom? I think it's Tom at Train.
I can look that up.
He actually reset it because took my old passcode, uh, passcode off of there.
All right, uh, do you have a passcode on the phone, a password for the phone?
No, never had one.
All right, because what it does is it cuts off, um, it doesn't put anything forward for emails. I can't, actually, I can't log into it.
So emails might, the, the voicemails might be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Could be both.
So I have, actually, I have Savage coming out today to help me with that if they can figure it out. They don't normally.
I, I've had trouble with my emails ever since the transition. I can't get into my W Fleti at Ashford Town Hall. You might mention that to them.
Thank you, I will, um, because that's an issue.
And, um, but I, I never had a code and I don't remember getting a charger with that. I know I had a couple of them here at home, my personal ones, but I don't remember getting a charger, charger, Catherine.
Okay, so I probably have a couple extras too. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, that's all I have for right now for, um, for updates. The acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of October thirty first?
I was not available five years ago.
Okay, so Bill?
I, I, I will move approval of those minutes as written.
Uh, and I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and abstain. Okay, and the minutes of November twentieth?
Will accept.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Old business, hear from boards, commissions, committees?
Catherine, real quick, I did send an email, but the solar company did come out yesterday.
Oh, thank you, you know, that's, that's what I forgot to mention.
Yeah, um, I didn't know if it went through because I don't remember what time I actually sent it out, but they, they were out there yesterday. They found some, uh, let's just call them misinstalled fasteners, and they put sealant in the correct places hopefully, and we'll monitor. But, uh, they, they, I mean, it was a holiday weekend, so they made it out first thing, or sometime yesterday. It wasn't first thing, but they were there.
Very good. That's what I forgot to mention, the first selectmen's briefing, is that there was a leak at the fire department. Uh, and I did stop in to look and see where that leak was. And, uh, based, it looks like the solar company has gone out and done what they needed to do. Uh, just, just in passing, I'd like to mention that my grandson, Aaron, is a foreman in a solar, national solar company. And that's his thing. He makes sure that there are no potential leaks anywhere.
Guess I should have done that when I did that one, so.
Um, it wasn't the same solar company. So, um, okay, the Ashford School replacement projects update under old business, uh, the grant has been approved. I got that information from Cindy. Uh, any questions?
No, that's excellent news. She did an awful lot of work on that. It's much appreciated.
Yes, thank you. All right, new business, board and commission appointments, um, consideration of formation of twenty four, twenty five capital improvement committee. I'd like to suggest the people for that committee. Uh, Chuck Funk, John Caloris, Cindy Ford, Casey McHugh, Paul Varga, and we need a board of finance representative. Uh, hearing none, I'm more than willing to be the representative if either of you two don't want to be.
You said board of finance?
Oh, I'm, board of finance, I'm thinking board of selectmen, sorry. Board of finance representative, and we'll get one once they actually convene. They, uh, don't expect to convene, I guess, until December seventh. The last two meetings have been canceled, or the meetings before that have been canceled. So, um, in terms of those names, are you comfortable?
Absolutely.
Okay, and typically, do we have one of the selectmen on that? Or no, the selectmen chairs, first selectmen chairs it?
Well, first selectmen chairs, and of course, they're ex officio of all meetings, but, uh, usually that's the case.
Okay, so in this case, the first selectmen chairs it. Okay, so I'm going to, if that's okay with you, uh, do we need a vote, or is that just? We are all.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Are we, but we still are waiting a board, another board of finance?
Yeah, we're just, uh, from the board of finance.
Okay.
Uh, and, um.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, but I just make a comment. Catherine, I also, at one time, because of the transition, I'd asked Joe Kalanowski whether he wanted to, was interested in sitting in on it. Um, he said he would if it would help with the DPW. I have, you know, your discretion on that, though.
I think what we'll do is we'll leave that to Casey as to what his comfort level is.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke to Casey about that too, and he thought that was a good idea, but.
Okay.
Again, you know, I, Joe's willing to help, but, uh, it's up to us to figure out whether we want him on there or not.
All right, thank you. Okay, so the motion? Again, uh, we have a first, we have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Board of Assessment Appeals, uh, reappointment of alternate member Rob Trotta attached to Tom Martin, reappointment of alternate member Nayanu We Stephens attached to Elizabeth Little, both to serve to uh, November two thousand twenty seven.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Conservation Commission, three appointments, I'm sorry? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Conservation Commission, reappointments of Loretta Robel, Steve Mariko, Gwen Holland, Christina Sabo, Janet Bellamy, Bill Dubinsky to serve as regular members to November two thousand twenty five. And then, uh, we'll do that as one motion and then the reappointment. And we could do, we can do both of these together, right? Reappointment of Stephanie Dubinsky to an alternate member seat to serve to eleven, two thousand twenty five. One alternate member vacancy term is left, which expires November two thousand twenty five. Is this a husband and wife on the Conservation Commission?
Sounds like it.
Yes, it is.
Are there any issues with that?
They're having, and they've both been serving on it.
I, I never consulted with counsel on that, but it might be a question or, but I don't believe it is, but they've been on it for a while now.
Oh, let's move, let's move forward then. Um, so can I have a motion for that?
Make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. And then Ashford Housing Authority. Oh, I'm, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, Ashford Housing Authority, one vacancy to expire January first, two thousand twenty four, and one vacancy to expire January first, two thousand twenty eight. So, uh, the Housing Authority recommends appointment of Bill Karinski to fill vacancy created by the resignation of Sandy Fletcher. So, Chris, just a quick question on that. Which vacancy is that filling? The one that expires the next January first, or the one that expires in two thousand twenty eight?
I believe it's the one that expires in twenty four.
Okay. So can someone make a motion for that? It's going to be a short term.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, Eastern Highlands Health District Board of Directors, appointment of municipal representative. I'd like to be that representative, um, uh, because I'm closest to what's going on here.
Don't move.
Sorry?
Second.
Don't move.
Oh, okay, uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Uh, Economic, Economic Development Commission, we don't have anybody for that yet. Inland Wetlands Water and Watercourses Commission, uh, we don't have anybody for the regular member vacant seat, nor the vacant alternate member seat. So we need to keep searching. Zoning Board of Fields, one alternate member seat term which expires November fifth, two thousand twenty five, nobody for that. Our Town, Our Future Core Committee, reappointments of Ray Fen, Maureen Hennick, Hennick, um, Richard Williams, Gwen Holland, Margie, Margaret Chady, Mike Gantic to serve to November two thousand twenty five. And an appointment of Nora Galvin to serve full term on the Our Town, Our Future Core Committee as recommended by the committee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, we've got some committees filled. Um, tax refunds, Chris, do we have anything?
No.
Discuss and act upon formulation of two thousand twenty four Board of Selectmen Meeting Calendar. Two options are presented, or we're presenting, um, with Tuesdays and without Tuesdays. Uh, my feeling on this is we should not need the Tuesday meetings, um, on a regular basis, and that we can always call uh, and, uh, a special meeting if we need to act on something on Tuesdays. Do either of you have any issues with that? Have you seen the calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah, you've got that. Bill, you've got that?
Uh, no, I cannot get into my W Fleti email, and I haven't been able to copy anything off of it, so I have not. I, I support keeping the Tuesdays on as regular meetings. Um, we can always cancel them if we don't need them. I think from a staff perspective, having those Tuesday meetings, it's helpful to have them join us if, if the need arises without being interrupted at a night. And I, I just found it helpful. I, I know it's a bit of a nuisance and one more burden on Chris's back, but I, I support continuing them as regular meetings because we can add things to the agenda, or if there's no need for a meeting, we can publish the cancellation of it, uh, by the week before.
Okay, I spoke with, um, some of the employees, and they didn't feel those meetings were needed. And that, um, a special meeting, if, if we need them to come in and speak to something on the agenda for a special meeting, then we could do that. I'll be talking with them regularly to find out if there's anything that they feel, um, they need to be included in. So, uh.
We just want to hold off on voting on this for one more meeting then?
We can hold, we can hold off, but, um, I know that I'm not, my, my mind is not going to be changed. Um, the, uh, I just want to make sure that we meet the deadline for this.
Oh.
Uh, which is, we still have time.
I believe if we hold off until December, we're going to pass the deadline.
Thank you. So we need to make a decision today. So I need a motion.
Well, it's. I, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the calendar then, uh, understanding that on, we'll have special meeting announcements on Tuesdays if required.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Uh, motion passes. The, let's see if we have anything else. A second. Uh, agenda items for upcoming Board of Selectmen meetings. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm all set for now. Our next one will be a regular meeting, and will it be next Monday night?
Yes.
That's correct.
Or we, or does this meeting go into effect, so we're not meeting, uh, next Tuesday?
No, this, we will continue meeting on the Tuesday meetings through the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay, because that's what was filed.
Yep.
And Chris, does that also apply to January, or does this new calendar override what we have for January?
I have to think about that.
All right, we'll come back on that. But for December, we will definitely be meeting on Tuesdays. Okay, uh, and, and on, uh, next Monday's meeting as well. So, anything else for the agenda? At this point?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so your next regular meeting is Monday, the fourth of December.
Okay. Very good. Uh, and then I wanted to add to the agenda, if we can, the, uh, uh, having, uh, a part-time worker do the, uh,
assisting up the town.
Uh, work with Public Works, the Public Works Director to go through his files, et cetera, and get things organized for him. Do we have any, do we, oh, thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and should I name the person on in here?
You can do that. I, I appreciate you bringing it up for a vote. I don't think you have to, as long as it's not a, a special allotment. And when I talked to Casey previously about this, he felt he could handle it through his existing payroll account, but, um.
I don't think it's a lot of work.
I beg your pardon?
I don't think it's a lot of work. It's, it's probably maybe a week's work, max.
Yeah, what, what I was hoping for, and I, I'm sure we can get it accomplished, was setting up more of a formal process for the processing of the POs and that. Um, you know, as well as clearing Casey's desk and, and those file cabinets, I, I don't know if they've ever actually been gone through.
Right, so actually.
I, I was thinking originally maybe two or three weeks.
All right, so again, I was, actually, I should have done this properly. I was trying to add it to the agenda. Could someone make a motion to add this, uh, the subject of support for the Public Works Director? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, and so I, I'm going to pursue that with Casey. I've already, I had already talked with him. And I already talked with the part-time worker, just to see if that person could be available. So, well, good, that'll help him. Uh, for the person that's done a fabulous job in the, um, Senior Senate. While subbing for our director. Okay, and, uh, so we voted to add it to the agenda, now just a, a vote to proceed with it. And I know you're saying we don't need a, a motion, but I'm just trying to be zealous. Motion?
Zealous, okay.
Okay, zealous on. Uh, I'll make that motion.
Okay, he made the motion. Bill, you want?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, another thing to add to the agenda is, uh, uh, we wanted to discuss the cleaning deposit for, uh, a possible cleaning deposit for, uh, Knowlton Hall use. So, can some, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And.
Can I?
All in favor, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I was going to make a suggestion for a friendly amendment for that motion, but, um, I think a cleaning deposit is good, but also, Catherine, we had talked very briefly about coming up with a dollar figure in lieu of donation of food. Um, I don't know if you want to.
In lieu of what? In lieu of?
Uh, donation of food.
Yes, so let's talk about that. That's purpose.
Discussions that I've had with, with the group that handles the, the Food Share Program and that force. They, while they appreciate the food that's donated, when people do make arrangements to use the hall, um, they get a, they would get a much better bang for their buck if actually a check was drawn to them and they could go to Food Share. They say they can get five times the amount of food that can be bought, you know, uh, by the contributors from the markets and that. And it made sense to me to go that way. In other words, instead of when somebody wants to, and it's for us to come up with a dollar amount, but if somebody wants to use the hall, there would be a fee for the, for the hall of hypothetically, let's say fifty dollars, and that check would be drawn to the food bank. And then the food bank would actually purchase the food instead of, um, the person renting the hall.
So in that situation, how would we know that the check had been donated, or the money had been donated?
Well, we could request that the check be given into our office, um, I mean, the same way that we handle the food right now. Uh, and then we turn that, that check over to the food bank, figure out a mechanism for that.
Do we think that fifty is too steep?
Well, I don't know of any halls you can rent for even double that around.
Yeah.
Could you say?
More than reasonable. Not too steep.
So if we were to do this, we would have to give people notice.
Oh, I.
Few months notice.
I definitely think in the next season, we ought to give them at least sixty day notice, say effective February first or whatever, and give them new fee, and, and also if we're going to ask for a cleaning deposit at the same time, um, you know, give them plenty of notice on that. I, I would think sixty days is sufficient.
I already have bookings into next year.
How far do your bookings go, Chris?
I'm sorry?
How far do the bookings go?
I would have to go through the calendar, but I have three or four bookings into the spring.
Well, we'll be grandfathered.
Yeah, I, I would just think we'd have to make exception for grandfather, those we've already committed to. Let them know what the new procedure is going to be if they want to use it again.
Uh, have we figured out a, uh, deposit for the, uh, cleaning deposit? An amount?
I think we just talk generalities.
Personally, I don't think we need a cleaning deposit. Um, I think that we have already, um, got a cleaning company coming in.
But they said they would charge extra if they had to come in after a, uh.
After, after an event.
Yep.
So if that were the case, you know, we, we don't have a lot of rich people in town, so I'm just thinking about that. Um, and the cleaning deposit, if we were doing that, who would be taking? who would be taking that? What would that be? I mean, in terms of, would they write us a check and then we'd give them back the check?
Well, that's what I would think. The same way they pick up the keys when they're gonna be using the hall from Chris, they leave a deposit for, for cleaning. I, I would think a fifty dollar deposit for cleaning and a fifty dollar deposit for use of the hall. Um, so we'd ask for two checks.
Seems to make sense that way. If it's, you know, if it's clean, then they get their check back. Uh, but again, that's gonna fall on Christine or whomever.
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure that we have a smooth process.
Well, right now, the process is people bring the food over. If we get them, we bring them over to the, if, if we can, we have them bring it over to the church directly, but quite honestly, there, uh, frequently, there's food left there at town office building that we either have to bring over or have it picked up by Public Works. And then they get the key from Chris, so she still has that mechanism that she does whether or not we have a deposit or a fee or not.
Chris?
How?
You wanna weigh in on this?
How do you wanna handle non-town functions like the exercise class, the Arts Council, um, the Historical Society?
Good point.
All, all of who use Norton Hall.
You want my thought on that?
Sure.
If, if, if it's, if it's a town organization, we're not gonna charge them for the hall. If it's a private individual or an outside company or, or firm or whatever that wants it, then they pay.
So just as we have identified people who don't have to pay to put their ads in the citizen, that would be basically that same group of people uh, and commissions and boards and whatever, who, uh, organizations, I should say, that would not have to pay. Correct?
Like the five oh one C threes, yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah, Chris, in terms of handling the checks coming in and the return of the, the check after, uh, the cleaning check, so to speak, is that something that's gonna be cumbersome for you in terms of putting them into an envelope? And, uh, and, uh, holding them? Or is that something I can do?
It would be preferable if somebody else can.
I, I can.
I, I don't know, uh.
I can, I can do that.
It's one more thing.
Yes, I know. I'm not looking to make one more thing, believe me. Um, I can do that. The only thing, uh, and we're already gonna be coordinating on who's using what building for what. So, uh, you'll still be the person who's accepting, you know, um, I'm gonna say booking it because you keep track of that. But as far as, um, they would have to leave their deposits with the first selectmen. Will that work for you, Chris?
We can give it a try.
Okay. Okay, and then the plan would be to put this in the January citizen to go into effect uh, in March, if I understand correctly, except for those who are grandfathered in, or do we're saying we're going to put it uh, into the citizen in January for it to go into effect immediately, except for those who've already booked? Let's think about that.
Um, I like the latter.
Go in, uh, in, which one was the latter?
Those that, those that are grandfathered are status quo.
Yeah.
And effective January first, they have to start paying if it's a new reservation.
I think that's, yeah, that's good.
Okay. That'll be fine, um. And then what we would do is, uh, we would, uh, in the write-up for the citizen, it would say who they have to give their check to, checks to, uh, and, um, what the process is. Sound right?
Sounds right.
Sound right, Bill?
Yes. So moved.
Good second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, I'll work with you on this.
Where is the rental money gonna go?
The rental money?
Yeah. The food bank.
It's gonna go to the food bank. We're gonna have them make out their check to the food bank. Do we need to? Um, that's not anything that has to go through our treasurer, our, uh, accounting. Because if it's made out to the food bank, it's already made out.
There is an account for the food bank already.
Well, do we have to do it that way? Do we have to put it in the food bank account and then write a check or whatever to take it out of the food bank account, or can we just give it directly to the church?
I, I, suggestion Catherine, will we check with Laura and, and maybe Sherry?
You'll do.
If we've got an account set up, it's probably easier just to walk the check down the hall and then let them, whenever they make their allotment to the food bank, they can include that. We can track it better that way too.
Okay. We'll, we'll work with that. Okay, yeah, again, I'm not looking to make extra work for people if I don't need to. Or we, we don't need to. Okay, um, again, we already voted on this, right?
Yep.
Thanks for keeping me on track. Uh, okay. Anything else that we feel we need to discuss? That needs to be added to the agenda? All right, so, not yet, not yet. Okay, so, uh, uh, password to the phone again, Bill, you said that.
Never got one.
Okay. Just double check.
Never had one.
Uh, I also found a, a few notes and things here that you may wanna go through. I set them aside for you. They were your notes.
Okay.
Okay, and some other, other things as well.
Contracts to sign.
Yeah. Oh, yes, and we need to have you come in to sign the uh, union contract, the extra copies, the extra originals.
Okay.
That would be good.
Can you leave them in my box or on, on, on the table there near us?
I'll leave them, I'll leave them on the table.
Okay.
Okay. Great. I think, uh, and, and we didn't have anything for agenda items for the next meeting at this point in time. Okay.
We'll do a jury.
Bill?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I got that one right. Thank you for your patience this morning.
Thank you.
I can't wait till the next time we go to do this.
Have a good day, everybody.
Okay, thanks.
You too, Bill. Stay safe.